And good afternoon, good day, wherever you may be in our global viewing audience. My name is Sam Atero and I'm coming to you from my digital studio in beautiful Fairfax County, Virginia. If you don't know where that is, that is in Northern Virginia. The local vernacular is NOVA, Northern Virginia. We're just outside of Washington DC and a hotbed of political activity and social change. I mean, things are absolutely have been bubbling and boiling over here for quite some time. And well, if you're new to USA Now, maybe you've seen me and the show that was previously called NOVA Now. This is how I got my start here, conducting myself as a citizen journalist within the NOVA marketplace. And we started covering events that were happening mainly, I mean, news, entertainment, things like that, but really dug deep into covering the hubbub that has been hitting the national news in Loudoun and Fairfax counties. And when I say hubbub, I'm talking about, of course, school boards run amok. So, we did this last year for a good part of the year under the banner of NOVA Now. We actually spun off a show called Education Matters. You're going to meet our host of that show, Harry Jackson, here as well, took a several month hiatus from production and decided to rebrand the NOVA Now effort and the idea behind NOVA Now as a national news outlet. So, like the world needs another independent media cat like me, espousing opinions and craziness on the interwebs, but you know, I figure, why not? This is a gift the good Lord gave me. I have the wherewithal and the resources to build a nice studio. And you know what? I'm in the hotbed of it and might as well get out there and tell some stories and give this platform to the good people of our country to dig deep into the stories that matter to America. So, welcome to USANow.TV. Again, here we go. School Boards Run Amok. Now, we have a platform, a format for this new show. What, and I'm going to be doing this once a week. Harry is going to be doing his show, Education Matters. I thought it'd be a great place to start since it's such a hot button topic. And I've done a lot of work as an independent journalist covering these events. And Harry, as a co-host on the network, is going to be joining us today, as well as some other local friends that are embroiled in the, well, fighting for what they believe is right and against the craziness that is happening at a local level in the school boards here. And, and I want you to keep in mind, again, this is USA Now. We're going to be talking about NOVA today, of course, but these are stories that have national implications. So, what we're going to do, I've decided on this fun format, we are going to go ahead and cover several stories. First off, the Virginia School Board Association pushing back against Yonkin, some of what is being seen as retaliatory actions taken by school boards against local parents. We are then going to talk about Thomas Jefferson's School for Science and Mathematics and the hubbub that has been, or science and technology, I should say, the hubbub that has been taking place here regarding the admission rules, which a federal judge did turn around and strike down as unconstitutional. And then Fairfax County turned around and decided that they were going to fight it, expending more taxpayer dollars to defend their system. And then a judge again slapped them down again. And we have a soundbite, dynamic soundbite, from Asra Nemaney at the school board meeting from the other day. We are going to hear then a little bit about a surveillance program that has been proposed for an online surveillance program, a social listening program, I should say, that has been proposed here for Fairfax County. We're going to play a quick soundbite from that. And we are going to then discuss Abrahar Omech's online CRT forum, where she says, "It is not a Marxist ideology. It is not bigotry toward white people. Jesus was into CRT," and against post-modernity. So, she held a, independent from the school board. She did hold a online forum via Zoom, I believe it was last week. And I am going to play some select soundbites from that and have our guests chime in on all these stories in real time. Also, I want to remind you, if you are joining us on our live feed, you can jump in to our restream chat. And we have right here, oh, we have people already jumping in. This is cool. I'm going to go ahead and pull up our guests. Here we have Paul Lott, Brian Davison, Norma Margulies, and Harry Jackson. And we do have, the chat is working. We have Jill, Jill King says, "Welcome." So, that's very, very, very cool. We can respond in real time to your chat. So, everybody in our panel, welcome to the very first episode of Atero. This is 7:20. And you guys are in the hive. Let's go ahead and have a vibrant conversation. There you go. We got everybody?
Yes.
Excellent, excellent. So, we have Harry Jackson, Norma Margulies, Paul Lott, and Brian Davison. I'm going to go to each one of you and give a brief introduction of yourself, who you are, and your work that you have been doing at a local level, and some of you even on a statewide level, to address issues of national import in our education system. Harry, let's start with you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Harry Jackson. I am a co-host on this network. I work, I host a show, Education Matters. I first became involved in this fight with, as a co-founder for Coalition for TJ. My current background is that I used to be involved in education within Fairfax County as a board member for the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted. I'm currently the vice president of that organization, as well as I chair that diversity committee. I'm also the former president of the Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology Parent Teacher Student Association President. I was also a member of the diversity committee there, where I ran even a conference, bringing together a group of providers within our community that actually provide freedom, reduce services for low income households. And I also serve as, as an African-American liaison to Fairfax GOP, and I'm a parent advocate for parents of any education.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. And let's go to Norma Margulies. Norma, thank you so much for joining us today. Tell us a little bit about you and let our audience get acquainted with you.
I am delighted to be here. This is Norma Margulies. I am TJ parent. My, that's how I became involved, to be perfectly honest. I was living a very comfortable, private life until I found out through my son that Thomas Jefferson was planning on eliminating the admission test and going for a lottery and the, and the school board. So, I decided, well, I had two choices. Either I am a spectator or I can take some actions. And that's what I decided to do. So, pretty initially, and always ideologically and philosophically, the Coalition for TJ, I think they are on the right side of history and they are courageous parents. And on my side, I decided to set up a pro bono association with parents, Hispanics for STEM. What we do is to promote diversity at the STEM schools the right way. And the right way is by providing the right tools, tools for low-income Hispanic students, such as the services provided by Black Student Fund that we are partnering, thanks to Harry Jackson, Dr. Harry Jackson. So, that's how I got involved in all of this. And I just last Thursday attended the first in-person school board meeting that I will be talking about. That's...
Yeah, some fireworks there. We're going to play some, play some video from that. And man, oh, man, oh, man. And I should say, well deserved. Everything that I've been reading, that I've been following for the past year, you know, FCPS has just seen train wreck after train wreck after train wreck. And it seems very much self-imposed. We're going to get, dig deep into that today. And of course, I want to remind everybody, many of these topics that we're going to be discussing, of course, are going to be long-form, deep dives on Harry's show in the future. Today, we're just going to kind of move quickly through and skim some of these. And we want to hear from you. We want to hear, we want to hear your feedback and hear from you in the live chat. So, let's go to our next guest, Paul Lott, good friend of mine. Brother, thank you for coming on. This is really great to see you. Your mic is muted. There you go, buddy.
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
Been in education for, been in education for about 30 years, starting out in DOD. I was a professor in the Department of Defense at one of the war colleges in Virginia. I've taken sabbaticals and volunteered in some of the worst, most violent school systems across the country, Gary, Indiana, South Chicago, Mattapan. About 12 years ago, formed a, a ed tech firm where we did research into how people learn, how kids learn, and what, how technology can augment that. But at the beginning of the Corona, of the Corona COVID crisis and all the riots that were taking place, I formed an organization called the National, the National Society for the Advancement of Black Americans. Its initial mission was to look at what I call poverty clusters and the characteristics of those poverty clusters with a view towards coming up with solutions that were based on data and evidence. That was an eye-opener. We've done, we did a number of studies during the first year into this idea of systemic racism and white privilege. And the results were startling in sense of the data didn't support those narratives, particularly in Virginia, the data didn't support those narratives. So, I've been doing that. And then finally, about last summer, decided to run for Congress in the 10th district because I believe that a lot of the policies that are negatively impacting underperforming schools are policies that have to change at the legislative level. So, I've been working with the legislation. I had two bills come out of the House, anti-CRT and to counter, and to make cultural competency training non-mandatory. And we'll continue that fight in the legislature, working with Yonkin administration to try to make, to try to get policies, et cetera, rewritten and changed at the level, at the government level. So, hi.
Paul, busy guy, and we really do. Microphone, very busy guy. I'm yelling at you guys. Your microphone's muted. Mine was muted. I was typing and I know you all were hearing me, so I muted my mic. And sometimes I forget to remute or unmute. Paul, thank you for everything that you're doing. You're doing incredibly dynamic work and we're looking forward to watching your, your, your campaign build. Love your message and you are a credit to our, our community and to this country. And I'm really glad to call you friends, sir. Let's go to, absolutely. Brian Davison, the most feared and hated man in Loudoun County, apparently, so says the New York Times. We're going to learn a little bit more about that. Brian, you don't seem all that scary to me, brother. Tell us what's going on. Tell us the first who you are, man. Welcome to the show.
I'm very reserved. So, my name is Brian Davison, just like Norma. I'm just a typical parent, private citizen, have a, have a private life that's not, not focused on education. I have always been interested in policy matters. And about seven years ago, a friend introduced me to the concept of FOIA, you know, Freedom of Information Act requests. And I asked for some information on growth percentile. Loudoun County said they didn't have it. And it turned out that not only did they in the Virginia have it, but that federal law required them to use them to evaluate teachers and to provide it to schools. And that a lot of fraud had been going on. So, I tried to work with our, our school board, Loudoun School Board. They weren't interested in 2014. So, in 2015, I began speaking out, found out they were violating a bunch of other laws, including conflict of interest act laws, where they weren't disclosing that many of our school boards have family members who receive the paychecks that they vote on. They were violating student privacy in FERPA. And the school board members began to censor me by blocking me on, on social media. And eventually, they retaliated by banning me from my own kid's school. Now, I have a history of, was in the United States Navy, is a submarine officer, very decorated with impeccable, impeccable record. Understand that the school boards are used to doing this to people who won't fight back. So, I simply chose to, to push back with lawsuits and with social media and have been an activist for, for educational reform, particularly for focusing on students as opposed to the adults in the system ever since.
Outstanding. Thank you so much again for the work that you are doing locally and your involvement in the TJ issue down here, too. We had you on Harry's show to discuss that as well. So, we're going to talk a little bit about what is happening in Loudoun County and here in Fairfax County as well. And I want to remind everybody, if you are just tuning in, please, we really need your help with this. This is a fledgling new network. Very, very excited about this. The possibilities are endless. If you are watching from somewhere else in the country, other than NOVA, we want you to keep in mind this format. Now, this is my show. This is what I'm excited about, is moderating vibrant discussion. You know, even if you disagree with me, come on here, let's talk about it. And let's open up there our ears and our hearts and open up dialogue, talking about the issues that matter to America. So, if you like what you're seeing here, even if you disagree with our guests, or you disagree with my stance on the world in general, consider coming on the show. Tell us what is happening in your part of America. Remember, USA Now is your network. And we're excited about the possibilities of involving you as listeners and viewers, taking phone calls and having community forums as well. So, let's go ahead and dive into the first topic here. And I'm going to pull up our guests. And I'm going to go through this, a couple of things that are happening here. First off, this great story from the New York Post, "How a Dad Became Enemy Number One to Teachers in Loudoun County, Virginia." This delves deep into Luke Razniak's book, that Race to the Bottom, that just launched. And he was the writer that broke some pretty big stories coming out of Loudoun County last year. This is all about our ginger-haired friend, Brian Davison, who is a father and had a legal fight, as he mentioned, with Loudoun County School District, simply to get data on how students were actually performing. And then we saw the retaliation take place. We have in here, Loudoun Schools and other Virginia Schools, a coalition of superintendents pushing back against Governor Yonkin, who they are saying is divisive. And Brian mentioned the equity statements coming down from Loudoun County. And I have a soundbite here from a new friend of mine from Fauquaire County, who is producing some short educational videos on the unions and the Virginia School Board Association and the tentacles that they have reaching deep into Virginia education. So, there's our first topic, a bunch of stuff wrapped up in there. Why don't we go ahead and start this with Brian? And I'm going to turn this conversation over to you guys. And what I want you to do is a disgust. We're going to go ahead and have a, have, you know, have at it for a little while, have a vibrant discussion, and just talk about what is happening here. And give me direction if you want to. You can say to me, "Sam, hey, pull up on the screen that Virginia Superintendent's article, for instance, right? And tell me what you want me to bring up, if you want me to, and have a little bit of a discussion. And then we'll move on to the next topic." So, you guys ready to go? All right. Who wants to start?
I can start with a little background on Loudoun County and just the effectiveness of, of a school district. So, you know, way back around the early 2000s, there was a bipartisan bill called the No Child Left Behind Bill. And the idea was, we want to have some accountability in our school systems, see objective metrics, not like super easy state tests that says everybody passed. We want to see how well kids are doing, want to break it down by groups, by, by gender, by, by race, by free and reduced lunch, and things like that. And then we want to give incentives to states to improve their educational system. We're going to give federal dollars to them. But in order to receive the federal dollars, you have to report on those metrics. Over time, the accountability metrics became more challenging because they wanted to raise the overall efforts. And eventually, into the Obama administration, they decided, "Well, we will give some waivers to these harsh accountability or these, these very rigorous accountability metrics. If you will calculate what's called student growth, did the student, wherever they started, did they grow in terms of their academic performance?" And all those states were required to, to calculate these and give these to teachers and potentially use them for evaluations. If you have a school where the kids are growing, then, then that's, you know, good. And you want to promote that. If you have a school where the kids are not really growing, they're, they're not learning nearly as much as the other kids, even when they, you know, start from that same state, we want to give the, the parents and the students some choice. Ultimately, I issued a Freedom of Information Act request for that data from affluent Loudoun County. Now, for those who are not familiar with Loudoun County, it's been called the wealthiest county in the nation, not because it has wealth, but because the household median income in Loudoun is the highest in the nation. It's because it's mostly professionals, two-parent households, doctors, engineers, and lawyers. And there's a lot of what they could say is human capital. Now, nobody claims that if you took the Loudoun kids and put them in DC and put the DC kids and put them in Loudoun, that all of a sudden, those, those DC kids with the Loudoun teachers would, would score at the top of the chart. So, the question is, how do we evaluate the actual teachers and the actual schools? And that's what these student growth percentiles do. As I obtained the data, it, it appeared to me that Loudoun was no better than any other school district. In fact, on the international PISA exams, where they look at 10th grade scores and compare them to other counties in the state as well as other countries, when you compare Loudoun to similarly affluent districts, Loudoun scored at the very bottom on math, science, and English. So, let me repeat. Loudoun County, which says it has a great education system compared to other affluent districts in, in both the United States and other countries, scored at the very bottom across the board. And I began to speak out and say, "We need, you know, better teachers, better administrators." Loudoun and other school districts in Virginia violated the federal law by saying they were receiving and using the growth scores when they acknowledged not even downloading it. And then all of the school board members began to block me on social media. And eventually, for, for, for speaking out against them, they banned me from my own kid's elementary school for, for an entire year. Now, at, at the time, I had a, a high-level TOD security clearance, impeccable record, and nobody had claimed that, that I was even a threat. The principal tried to have me arrested for handing out flyers on the public sidewalk. So, the retaliation, you know, that you see over the last couple of years from the Virginia School Boards Association, this is not a new thing. Districts have been punishing special education parents and other activists, simply when they criticize the district. The principal who banned me claimed that the PTA was not allowed to put any information on the PTA website if it was unflattering to the school and the school district. So, that is effectively their policy. The lady you see in, in, on the screen right now, Debbie Rose, she was a school board mender, school board member. She and her husband filed criminal complaints against me for comments I made at school board meetings and on social media about her official conduct as a school. That's how serious they took it. And both the chief of staff and the attorney in Loudoun, who, who I had caught in a perjury scandal in, in Loudoun County Circuit Court, of which the state police said was well documented and legitimate, the perjury claims, they reported me to Child Protective Services for making these, these criticisms. So, that's how, that's how serious and corrupt many of these school districts are. And I'm guessing that many of our other guests have seen some of the same things.
Certainly makes the argument for why you need to have school choice.
So, Harry, have you, or Norma, have y'all seen any retaliation or any kind of attempts to, to censor either, you know, PTA groups or to censor other, other parents from speaking out when it's critical of the, of the schools?
Not of the schools, but I have seen it when I've seen activists that are active within, within your PTSA. I'll give you an example. Most of you are familiar with the news. I was a former president of PTSA at Thomas Jefferson High School. Back in November 2020, when I was a member of the diversity committee, when we were in this fight against admissions changes, one of, an activist within, which knows an organization, the TJ Alumni Action Group, had reached out to me and to, to work with, with recruiting underrepresented minorities, which I rejected because I didn't like their advocacy for the racist admissions system that Judd Childress recently threw out. But a lot of parents, we saw that he exhibited grooming behavior in a, in one of the PTSA meetings. I didn't report it. Other parents certainly did, brought to the school's attention. I merely tweeted about it as an observation, something that I observed, that I, one reason I was uncomfortable working with, with, with this individual. And by the way, we're on the news, like his name was, filed a criminal complaint that, for a misdemeanor, not a civil, but a criminal complaint as a method of trying to intimidate a parent or activist who take a different position to them and advocate for their kids. And in this case, this was a child safety issue.
Yes. The point, Sam, is that we saw the Virginia, the National School Boards Association, just a few months ago, filed a criminal complaint that, for a misdemeanor, not a civil, but a criminal complaint as a method of trying to intimidate a parent or activist who take a different position to them and advocate for their kids. And in this case, this was a child safety issue. Yes. I think one of the important things, Sam, is that we saw the Virginia, the National School Boards Association, just a few months ago, coordinate with the White House to call parents who are speaking out domestic terrorists. And if you've noticed, the Virginia PTA has not spoken out in defense of parents at all, none of the local PTAs. And I would like to distinguish between the Parent Teacher Association, which is affiliated with the National, National PTA group versus parent teacher organizations, which are independent, kind of think of like a, you know, school choice for, for parent organizations. These national organizations that are affiliated with the, you know, the woke, you know, political mob, don't want parents speaking out. They want to be able to control the narrative. They don't want parents being able to go to the school board, as we saw at Fairfax and Loudoun. They want to be able to control all the communication channels and to censor anybody who has, you know, critical information. And it's, I mean, it's gotten so serious that when the Department of Justice and the FBI are asked to, you know, collude with these national school boards associations, cut down parents, it's a really scary thing.
Yeah, I would like to add the following. As Dr. Harry Jackson mentioned, in our struggle and our opposition to the changes to TJ, I was very vocal. And that's one of the reasons why he was forced to resign. And as, as soon as he resigned, I decided to give up my membership with the PTSA because by then, our PTSA is under the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology PTSA is under the professional Virginia PTA, something that I find outrageous. It's not the topic of this conversation, I know, but it deserves a show in itself, how many PTSA's in the country are in our situation. So, then I decided, well, to give up my membership, but then I changed my, because I said, "Well, you know, I, the, the vice president decided that I was too lazy to meet it, whatever." So, I tried to do it again. And the president of the Virginia PTA, Pamela Kroom, blocked it. And she put it in writing that because of my opinions and beliefs, I shouldn't be allowed to resume my membership with the PTSA. So, I am another person, another parent who can attest to what Mr. Davison is saying. This type of organizations don't want this dissent voices of parents like me, person like mine.
I think that, that the issue here is, is, is bigger than, how can I say, bigger than Loudoun County, bigger than Northern Virginia, et cetera, et cetera. I think that overall, systemically, there are a number of issues, of issues in place. No Child Left Behind was put in place because we had kids graduating from high school with third grade reading level. In both, in, in Boston, around that time, when Bush put that in place, they actually had a group of, it turned out, an NBA player could not, could not read his own contract. And when they looked at the Boston Public Schools, it turned out that they had been graduating people, just kind of pushing them through the system. And they had to revoke the high school diplomas of about a four to five-year period, which kind of went downstream and affected other people. So, you know, the problem is, is that in this country, we kind of have a, on the one side, we believe in local autonomy and the ability of the teacher to kind of deliver education. But then on the other side, you know, we, we're looking for some level of accountability in terms of what are the outcomes. Because quite frankly, for generations, without that accountability, nationally, we had no, we had no idea of who was graduating and how. The problem I have with a lot of this is, is the standards don't measure up. For example, when we look at testing, we look at the, what are the PSSAs? That's based on an international standard, right? And everyone in all of the countries that score at the top of that, that type of a matrix, they have a 12-month school year. America has a nine-month school year. So, we're starting out behind the gun to begin with because we have a 12-month curriculum. because we have a 12-month curricula shoved in in nine months. And with the pace of it, it doesn't allow enough time for repetition and follow-up with our students. And it kind of bull forward. I call it a waterfall approach to education. It goes forward, you know, lesson, 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 quiz, lesson, 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 quiz, test, and it keeps moving. So when there's an issue, there's no way to remediate and move back because you have to flow for the slot plan. So that's put some difficulty. So it gives difficulties to the school districts because of the way the standard is. Because if you look at the four pillars of how education is delivered, where you have a standard, you have a lesson plan, you have curricula, and you have assessment. We have the standard and the assessment coming at a higher level than the lesson plan and the curricula. And so everyone assumes that it's aligned, but it's not aligned. It doesn't mean, you know, the test is meant to tell us what's going on against the standard. But since the middle piece is localized, delivery of that is uneven. And it is according to the talent of the individual teacher, whether or not that teacher understands the lesson plan, understands the standard to create the lesson plan, and then there's the whole politics and the selection of curricula. So when we get to the end test, those test scores may be low. It may not mean that the kids aren't learning anything. It just means they're not learning what's being tested or what's being assessed. And so.
But Paul, if I could interrupt you there, the whole point of the No Child Left Behind waivers and what I have the moniker on social media as Virginia SGE, meaning student growth percentiles, which is the metric that Virginia used to calculate growth, right?
Yeah.
We want to identify who are the best teachers and promote those or make those mentors and learn from what they're doing. Who, which teachers are maybe not as effective and work with them to improve them? Or given that the purpose of schools is not to employ teachers, but is to effectively educate kids to eventually, you know, find a replacement teacher. In other words, I made the statement that a minority student should be in a classroom with a teacher who has below-average effectiveness. And the fact that Virginia was intentionally disregarding the scores, I mean, we recently had a forum in Loudoun County where they have a different metric called the Measures of Academic Progress by the NWA. And they said, the school district doesn't even look at which are their best teachers to learn from. They don't even look at the data. So there has to be some accountability because we can see, like, districts like Loudoun with a $1.6 billion budget, 83,000 students are not even looking at data to improve their scores. And, you know, we have all this CRT nonsense, but on average, Black children are not even learning the average amount through the year. That should be the scandal, not this other stuff that they're doing. And the reason why they don't want to make it a scandal is about 85% of the teachers in Loudoun are white. They're very highly paid, but because of the teachers' union and the school boards, which are basically wed to the union, nobody wants to hold the teachers and then the administrations accountable. And that's ultimately what I see as the problem.
I want to get into the School Board Association as well. Hold that, hold one quick thought, Paul, because we're getting some chats here, which is kind of the point of the show. We want to give not only our guests a platform, but we want to respond directly to the public. So a couple of quick comments here, and we'll throw this to the panel. And then let's wrap up this discussion about assessments and testing. I mean, Harry, my goodness, you guys can do a whole deep dive into this on your show. So I want to keep moving along in the topics here, but portfolio development is a much better way to assess, what are they saying, to assess learning than standardized testing, Hank Xavier says. Steph Wilson, but Paul, this is for you. What are the Parents' Bill of Rights and why was it created? And then a question for Norma. Norma, are more parents getting involved in their child's education lately? And what is a good first step? So, well, Paul, let's go ahead and start with you. Your parental bill of rights, you want to give a quick comment on that?
Real quick. So the Parents' Bill of Rights, I looked across the country in three particular areas. Sexuality, CRT or race-based education, and in medical permissions. And so I drafted based on similar legislation that passed across the country with regards to those three areas and put together kind of a model Parents' Bill of Rights, which I socialized with the Yonkin Administration and with all of the Virginia Legislature. And the idea is you take that document, you can kind of pick and choose pieces to pull out, to put into legislation. For example, there was a Parents' Rights Bill that was, it failed in the Senate, it passed in the House, but the body of, you know, the meat and potatoes with regards to some of that came, was lifted out of that document. So it's not defined to be passed as a whole. It's just simply a legislative framework, looking at those, looking at those three particular areas. One quick kind of run, I'm not saying, I'm saying that the entire system, the public education system is flawed in this respect. The public education system is like having one mechanic shop in the entire county that everyone by law has to go to to get their car fixed. But that shop is not fixing your car and starts to blame you for the reason why your car keeps stalling after you've just spent thousands of dollars to have it fixed. So when I look at that situation, I don't think that a system that causes a problem can fix itself. I think you're asking too much. I think that the only reasonable way to look at education reform that can be effective is to introduce some free markets, introduce some competition, introduce some free markets. Some people will say that's school choice. My personal belief is that 80 to 100% of all schools within a district should be chartered. That we should look at evidence, look at charter school operators who have proven outcomes and let them, and starting with the schools that are the worst performing across the state, across the country, that those go to charter organizations with a positive record. Four to eight years, all of the charter school operators that are doing well are given the opportunity to take over the worst-performing charter school operators so that we can ensure that best practices gets lifted to the top. Where we're constantly looking at, because we have solutions to problems. We have Success Academy up in the New York State area. We have different organizations across the country that are looking at these issues that have teacher accountability, that have underperforming schools showing incredible progress over time. But because we're locked into this government-run school system, those best practices don't make their way into the system. And until we open up the system and have the education operation outside of the government hands, I think we're always going to have a problem. I think governments should handle infrastructure, they should handle transportation, they should handle utilities and maintenance. But I think the core pieces in the education piece should go into the free market. And it should be based on outcomes. If the outcome is an improvement or a positive outcome, that should be rewarded. In a closed government education system, it's very difficult to hold anyone accountable.
Well, you know what? Our commenter here, Hank, makes a great point. And I know when I was a career in technical education teacher, for many years, I taught digital media arts. And one of the most effective ways that we were able to show, or students were able to show and demonstrate the outcome of their education that they received was through a comprehensive professional portfolio that they had to produce and get weighed by industry professionals in their craft. And, you know, the standardized testing, I mean, again, this, we can go down this rabbit hole for so long. And I appreciate the invites. I'm going to throw this over to Harry real quick, though, on this idea of portfolio development. Harry, your thoughts on that? You're an educator. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, so I am an educator. I teach at college, doctorate, graduate, and undergrad. Even then, you still have to adhere to certain standards dealing with your original accreditation that your assessments have to align to your course objectives in accordance with Bloom's Sixonomy. Bloom's Sixonomy, particularly graduate-level analysis. And this is an analysis. So in this case, we're talking about, you know, dealing with knowledge and application. Are our administrators able to teach to the level where a child can know and certainly knows the knowledge? And I think standardized tests is the only objective measure to, in order to do that. But also standardized tests also identifies who your gifted learners or accelerated learners are, not through portfolio development, because that can be gained quite a bit. When you start dealing with portfolio management, you think about the lack of accountability of teachers. Look at Patterson High School up in Baltimore, where they implemented something similar they just did in Virginia, where the lowest score, the lowest grade you can ever award a child in our school systems is at 50%. Now, but this is the outcome that this will achieve. If you look at Baltimore, they had that same policy in place. And look at Patterson High School, where out of 489 students that graduated from the senior class, only 12 of them were reading at grade proficiency levels. Many of those children that had graduated from that high school had only, were able to read at the kindergarten, first grade, or second grade level. And that's the reason for that is, and this is the other thing that we've seen, they've tried to implement in Virginia, that they haven't been in Baltimore, is dealing away with ability grouping. Now, you've got Virginia Math, the Math Max Pathway Initiative, so you want to get away of grouping gifted learners separately. They want to put them all in the same group together, where the smart children will teach basically the lower children for mediation. When you have it where the floor being at 50%, a student can literally pass a class by doing one or two assignments. And that could be a group assignment where they have this group of smart kids actually helping them to do that. And that's basically leads to social promotion, where you leave to a workforce that graduates from high school that couldn't even pass a third-grade test. And that's an issue. That's why we need a cap standardized test, so one, so you can measure and keep the teachers accountable. How well are they doing this? How well are they teaching these students? Are the students are able to achieve a certain level? Are they growing? Are they developing?
And Norma, let's go back to you real quick on this question regarding parental involvement. Now, you're saying that you recently jumped into being an activist of sorts and raising your voice. Are you seeing more and more people, as Persson wants to know, are you seeing more people get involved? And what do you see as the critical first step to jumping in the game?
Well, yes, there are two different levels here. As a parent, I was always very committed to education, the education of our son and provided all the support that he needed in order to apply to such a challenging schools as Thomas Jefferson, right? But I was not active because I didn't see a reason. When I realized that that dream, the American dream, hard work, and the reward for your hard work would be jeopardized when they were discussing this idea, so lotteries, et cetera, that's when I decided. So there has to be a point in which you have to assess what is it that you have and what are you willing to do in order to, shall we say, preserve a basic idea of what America is all about? Which from my perspective is hard work and equal opportunities and then striving to do your best. That was the motivation for me. And I sense that there are more parents who are realizing that, wait a minute, maybe I can do something in order to preserve what is good, but also to formulate some recommendations to what can be done better. Because I just want to give you an example. El Tiempo Latina, for instance, a Spanish-speaking newspaper, presented to the community a charter school and emphasizing the importance of a charter school, like school choice for Hispanic parents who, as you know, are leaving the public system. I don't have the statistics, but we see a sharp number of degrees of students. And this Spanish-speaking newspaper was documenting the case of a very successful charter school. So parents realizing, okay, this is the dream. I want the education. Maybe I can do the next step and commit myself to another form of school for my kids. So there are different ways to get more involved, and I noticed that parents are realizing that, and I pursue in different paths. It could be an activist, it could be taking your kid to another system of school, different paths.
Outstanding advice. That was fabulous. Appreciate that. I'm going to move us along here to this story regarding the Virginia Association of School Superintendents and the School Board Association. Of course, we saw Loudoun County up there where Brian is. Recently, they removed their equity statement from the website stating that it should be a community statement. Ziegler said that he didn't write it, so he wants to remove it. And they are going to develop a statement that will, quote, "reflect our values as an LCPS community." And then meanwhile, more drama, Virginia Association of School Superintendents recently stepped out representing administrators across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And they wrote a letter to Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction criticizing her report of what Governor Glenn Youngkin has called inherently divisive topics in schools. Now, we have this story here regarding Virginia superintendents pushing back against Governor Youngkin's, quote, "divisive interim report." Somebody from our panel want to dig in a little bit deeper on that and tell us what they're talking about? And how is it that Youngkin is being divisive, or is he?
So I'll take a first shot at that if you don't mind. So many of us, particularly with kids who are looking for advanced STEM or other advanced opportunities, believe that the standards in Virginia and in many school districts are low, that students aren't held to high standards and that there's a lot of grade inflation. Pushing back against that is the refusal to group by ability by the school districts. And they had these equity statements that literally said, if you can predict outcomes of average scores in groups, whether they be by race, by gender, or whatever, if you can, if there's any differences in the outcomes of scores, then by definition, it's systemic racism. And this was the statement of V2E and Loudoun and other districts, and we have to correct that. In other words, equalize all the groups. That is textbook critical race theory and textbook Marxism. And if you think about it, if we invited talented scholars from any country, right, on H1B visas, whether it's from China, Korea, Kenya, Ecuador, wherever, we would expect their children to be very talented as well. And as we see, we see that here in Nova with certain, you know, demographic groups who mainly come in H1Bs. And TJ and other policies have said that that is the result of systemic racism. It's not the result of culture or basic background. And that they want to force everybody to learn the same thing, like in the Virginia Pathways Association. They're going to ban ability tracking and go to lotteries in TJ schools. And I want to personally thank the sensible, you know, Virginia state education officials who said, that's crazy. We don't want to hold anybody back regardless of race or gender or anything. We want to ensure everybody is advancing to their absolute individual best. And we will support them in any way, shape, or form. And if you look closely in that statement, there's no criticism saying, oh, we're not going to teach certain historical subjects. That's not the criticism. The Virginia Schools Superintendent's Association is pushing back and say they want to hold every demographic group to equal results, to equal outcomes. So they are by definition pushing CRT, and that's what parents elected Youngkin to get rid of.
Brian, you bring a very good point. This is kind of reminds me of what Paul mentioned earlier before, where the lesson plans that we're going through in our curriculum in public education do not align with international standards or the standard for the standardized test. And if you're a parent and if you have a kid that has an A in Algebra I and they're in, say, Fairfax, Loudoun County Public Schools, and you think your kid's a rock star, I would challenge you to say, go to art or problem solving, have their child assess. You will find gaps. You will find significant gaps. This push with CRT of equitable outcomes is, we realize that there's an issue within Northern Virginia where they are trying to have, they're trying to force equal outcomes, they're trying to address no-cost solutions to adjust the achievement gap. And the way they're doing that is they're trying to put a ceiling for high learners, they're dumbing down curriculum. So there's no ability for an advanced learner to really differentiate themselves from the other classmates. And that is an issue. We do need to actually help propel our top learners to reach their fullest potential. And we do need to address a more, what everyone, I think, wants to address is, why aren't children learning? And that has to deal with having poor-performing teachers in our schools, when they have poor aggregate proficiency scores. So they have poor growth scores. I mean, those teachers, we need to, they shouldn't be in the same school. Parents should have an option to, you know, if that school, if they can't get rid of that teacher because of a union contract, they should have a public charter option where we can hold those teachers accountable. Because if they're not performing, they get rid of them. But these teachers are having their jobs protected. We're not talking, they're not underfunded, they're not poor. They can be making, they're making six figures out in Loudoun County, in Fairfax County.
Interesting. I saw, made a new contact recently up in, or down, I should say, in Fauqua County. And she's been digging into this issue regarding the Virginia School Boards Association. She put together a little video clip. It's only two minutes. I'll put these clips and the articles that we're referencing in the show description when we're done here. But I'm going to play a little soundbite from you. This is really interesting. Give me your thoughts on this. So she's stating that the Virginia School Board Association trains every school board member in the Commonwealth, that they claim to be nonpartisan, but in fact, they are going in with, from a partisan. in with, from a partisan stance, with a partisan stance and educating folks for a particular political outcome or a political ideology outcome. Let's check this out.
... close attention to how these Republican sponsored bills are presented to the school board members. The first bill gives parents the rights to review instructional material, opt their child out of material they don't agree with, have access to all reading materials in the library and classrooms, be alerted to and be able to attend all public school board meetings, review the superintendent's budget, limit the teaching of divisive gender concepts, and require students to use the restroom and locker room that corresponds with their biological sex. The SBA chief lobbyist Stacy Haney described this bill as...
... Republican agenda on the bill.
After explaining Tim Anderson's school security bill, Haney had this to say.
Anyway, good news is this bill's still on. That might be the only piece of good news I have to share with you here today. So just remember, I said...
Haney joked while introducing delegate Dave LaRocque's family life education bill.
First one would require in family life that it required the viewing of a video recording of an ultrasound of a live unborn human in the uterus. I don't know where their, whose uterus they're going to use this, but there you go. And then the last one would limit family life education to one hour per year. And during that hour, we have to show the video of the uterus.
Paul Lott, is that, is that appropriate for the School Board Association to be giving such guidance? Why am I hearing music? Hold on. Oh, ha! I, I brought, that's my bad, 100%. I brought up, I brought up some cheesy elevator music there rather than your microphone, Paul. So is it, was that, was that what we were seeing there? And Brian, I want you to touch on this topic too, because you, 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 you put a pretty awesome post up a couple of days on Facebook, a couple of days ago on Facebook on that very topic. Go ahead, Paul.
So you have to understand, these organizations are essentially lobbyist organizations. So in objectively, yeah, they should be able to look at legislation and comment and provide some type of expert feedback. However, what we witnessed on this film was not expert feedback as to the meat of the policy or the merit of the policy. It was simply political pandering and, 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 you know, social construction. So, you know, that's my answer. No, what they did, what they said was wrong, but when I've been, when I've put bills, they actually scored my bills, they would come up and, and, and write down what objections they had to the legislation, what pieces of the legislation they support. And, and that's kind of the role that they're going to play.
Brian, did you want to comment on that? Hey, before we do that, Paul, if you, if you don't mind, check your input gain on your microphone, because the signal that I'm getting is pretty heavily overdriven and I can't fix it on my end. I think you're hitting the red on your end. Just pull the gain down a bit. Brian, your thoughts on this? You, 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 you made a great observation on Facebook the other day and I wanted to have you throw in on this. And then actually, this is a good segue because we were talking about assessments and merit based models versus other models and great segue to talk about TJ and what has been happening there. So go ahead and Brian, talk to us about the VSB.
So several things, the Virginia School Boards Association is about as anti-parent and anti-student as you could possibly get. When I was issued my FOIA lawsuit back in 2014, just to simply obtain public records, note identifying student information on growth scores, the Virginia School Boards Administration tried to intervene and block it. That's, that's how anti-student and anti-education they are. Stacy Haney, who was the, the lady, the lobbyist you saw speaking for the School Boards Association, was hired by Loudoun County to be an attorney in some of their, in some of their cases. She advocated and defended the suspension and the plan was to eventually fire the teacher who simply spoke out at a public hearing on public policy for, for restroom use. Now you can agree or disagree with Mr. Tanner Cross's position, but he simply, at a public hearing that was designed to solicit input, gave his opinion and they suspended him for that. And Stacy Haney pushed that, she argued for that. She got destroyed in Loudoun Court, she got destroyed in, in the Virginia Supreme Court. And so Loudoun just wasted a whole bunch of money trying to retaliate, not only against parents like me, but against teachers doing the same thing. And lastly, at that VSB conference, they had a radical activist from Seattle, Washington, who's been pushing CRT all over the country. She owns her own company and, and pushes it. If you remember, Seattle had, had lost the cases where they tried to set up policies where they explicitly called out race, that we're going to divide school districts and schools and everything and specifically argue race in it. And the Supreme Court struck that down. But this lady was invited to be a keynote speaker and to basically push her own company to the school boards for them to come in and hire her to push CRT. So the, the notion that any school district should give any money to the Virginia School Boards Association is, is simply insane at this point. They, they haven't defended parents at all. In fact, they're the ones calling for all parents to be suppressed so that they can control the narrative and the, and the communication channels.
Wow. And I, and I suspect that this isn't just happening in Nova. If you're out there watching anywhere in the United States and you're having similar issues with your state school board association or superintendent's association or local school boards, we want to hear from you, you know? Give me a call. I'm not going, I'm going to be doing a wide variety of topics here on my particular show, but I'll pass you along to Harry and I'm his producer for his education matter show. And maybe we can dig deep into what's happening in your part of the country. Now we talked a lot about CRT here in Nova and we talked about it across the national airwaves as well. We're going to dig into that real quick here in a little bit. And we've got several experts on this topic. There's a great talk by Paul Lott on thenovanow.tv. It was actually the first video that I ever produced for Nova Now going on a year ago now. I think it was June last year. And he delves deep into that, really, really good stuff. Check that out when you get a minute. Let's go ahead and go to our next topic, TJ. Now, Harry, you were talking about stand, the importance of standardized tests and the admissions hubbub. Well, as we know, a federal judge declared that, I believe it was a federal judge, they declared that the new admission rules that were put into place last year were patently unfair specifically to Asian Americans. And in fact, he used the word unconstitutional. Well, Fairfax County, in its wisdom, decided to expend more taxpayer dollars and fought this and requested a stay because their reason was that they weren't ready to implement the revised rules that the judge was saying that they would need to moving forward. Well, the judge recently came back and said, you know what? You knew about this a while ago and no, you're, the fact that, what, what do they say? You know, failure to plan on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part. So the judge turns around and said, no, you knew this was coming down or you could, you, you knew that it was a possibility and no, I'm not going to stay this. You need to abide by the law. Big, big story here, covered by the Washington Post and of course, New York paper, national papers, national news. Again, Fairfax County going off the rails. Let's start with you, Harry, because you were really central in all this. I can see he's, he's ready to go. He's like, let me out of Sam. Talk to us about TJ, brother.
All right. So TJ admissions, Thomas Jefferson School for Science and Technology, for the last two years by US News and World Report was the number one high school in, in the country. For years, for decades, they've had woeful representation from the black and Hispanic community. We're talking single digit percentage numbers within this high school. The tests and the measures that were used for admit, for, for a child to be admitted to this class was basically on merit based, race blind criteria. What it really does highlight by having such poor representation from these communities, it really does show the lack of quality of education within the pipeline within Fairfax County. And what they tried to do is they tried to go with a holistic admissions approach to get rid of that. And what they did is that, just to give you an idea here, within Fairfax, within the middle school pipeline, you have what's known as an advanced academic, advanced academic program. Now, most of the students constitute about 90% of the admittance to Thomas Jefferson's for School for Science and Technology. Now, when TJ was a majority white school, they didn't really care too much about the underrepresentation from the black and Hispanic community. It only really became an issue in 2012 when TJ was first named as the top high school. And that's when it was at that time, majority minority. It was a majority Asian in 2012, 2015, 2017, 2018, and recently where TJ is routinely being named the top high school in the country and it is majority Asian. The minority for black and Hispanics has always remained about one or 2%. The issues with that, that, that deal within the pipeline shows that from schools from majority black and brown schools typically are underrepresented within that because they've done, they've gone away with ability grouping. We've seen where you have a gifted class, eight kids, they'll fill that class with 20 kids who are not gifted and it dilutes the collaborative learning environment where you have this, the advanced learners are not able to reach their full potential to be competitive when it comes to test time to go into TJ. So this, their approach with this holistic approach was to, one, circumvent any child that goes into an advanced academic education. The school boards from the TJ papers acknowledged that they have enough kids that are in the advanced academic pipeline, kids are in geometry and above, to fill the entire cohort at Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. What they opted to do was to have a quota based system based off of where the, the school where the child attends, not the base school. And that's very important because if your child is in an advanced academic program and they cannot, and that school doesn't offer that program, your child gets bused to a school that does offer it. What the school board did in order to, in the guise of diversity is that they opted to allocate quotas to the school where your child attends to disincentivize a child into going into advanced academics. Let me repeat that. They disincentivize children enrolling into advanced academic programs. And then they tried to set them up for TJ where we now know from FOIA data that this school, that the class right now, the class of 2025, they're struggling. I mean, they've already had to get, do away with the remedial math and combine it with the, with the, with the normal math. A class that was remedial math, which would have maybe five to 10% of the class is now the majority of the class.
So a lot of members of the community, including some of the folks that are on the panel today here have been instrumental in raising your voice and even bringing this up in the national, the national media. And of course, as we saw, the judge agreed that this was unfair and he actually used the word unconstitutional, I believe. And then Fairfax turned around and fought back and, but recently we saw, and Harry, give us an update on this, the judge recently denied Fairfax County Schools' option to leave Thomas Jefferson admissions policy in place. So they wanted to leave it in place because they said they weren't ready to end the new policy that they did. A federal judge has denied the request of Fairfax County Public Schools for a stay in his order invalidating the admissions systems at the school, marking another serious blow for Virginia's largest school district. Give us an update on that.
Okay, yes, an update. So the judge did not buy the, the FCPS's argument for a stay saying irreparable harm. There, you know, they, they did not allow for FCPS to what they, in their, what their view is positive discrimination, which was in this case, anti-Asian discrimination, reducing the number of Asian students within TJ to, to, to boost the number of other racial groups to have Thomas Jefferson represent the, the racial diversity of the county, of the surrounding county. So that was, it was a win against racism with Judge Hilton's ruling against it. And unfortunately, our school board member, they're not knowing when to just admit defeat, are doubling down, they're having another appeal, they're spending more taxpayer dollars on trying to fight this, they're trying to sustain and justify racism for, as a criteria for, for admission.
And, and this is getting pretty heated. I'm going to come back to our panel here, but I'm going to play a real quick soundbite from the school board meeting the other day. Of course, it's not, it's not unusual to see Fairfax or Loudoun County schools in the national news. And man, this, this was a fiery exchange. Our friend Asra Nemaney from Parents Defending Education, familiar face at Fairfax County Public School happenings, well, she took to public comment the other day and offered a scathing rebuke of the school board, of much of the topic that we were talking about and led and helped to lead a protest out front. We actually have the whole thing that we're going to be posting up on the channel where folks are saying, look, this is patently, not my words, their words, patently racist, what the school is doing. Well, shout out to my new intern here at USA Now.tv, Coleman Bun. He took my little camera and went out there. I was unable to make it, but he was able to film this exchange with, between Asra Nemaney and the school board. And then watch what happens as the, as, as she wraps up her speech and security comes and converges on her. This is really something else. And then I want to get our panel's discussion about this. And one thing I, I'm going to start this clip here with Asra addressing the board and, and Coleman does a great job zooming in on Scott Brabran, the superintendent's face. And look, look at the look on this man's face. It really is quite telling. Here we go. Check this out.
A copy of a book for each one of you, Race to the Bottom. And you are all...
Yes! You are all going to get...
I have a book for you, Eric Corbett, Samir, a book for you, Alana, a book for you, Stella Pakarski, because all of you have failed us. I will have all of these books, I hope you read them from cover to cover and see yourselves in the pages of history. Failures.
Take your seat.
Are you intimidated? Then please sit down. Why are you standing?
Ms. Nemaney, thank you. Please take your seat.
No, Ms. Pakarski. You want to stop? You want to, you want to create a terror infiltrate? You want Asians to feel comfortable? You want minorities to feel comfortable? And look at you. Are you security? Are you security? Are you security? Are you security? You're security. What is this? Oh, and you sir, you sir are security. You are the man who deceives people. No, I would like you to stop and to have your security move themselves.
Whoa, you need to move off.
No, I just, I want you all to move yourself. We all know, oh, don't even charge your shenanigans with me. We know all of your deception. Please move yourself. You know, what, you always think that you can intimidate us, but you can't. Look at him there, standing. What are you, you're a white man, you're a white man, you're a white man, you're a white man. What is this? Why is racism happening against us?
Yeah. Racist. What is racist? Racist!
Wow, wow, wow. And this, this clip goes on actually for another nine minutes or so. And I would encourage you, go to USA Now.tv and check it out. And, and if you're watching and right now, go to the chat. We do have this up in live time. We would love to hear your thoughts on these topics. Let's go ahead and Paul, you know, we haven't heard from you for a little bit in this discussion. What's your take on what is happening here at TJ, sir?
I find all of this extremely disturbing. What these people don't realize is the very idea of anti-racism is basically saying that blacks and minorities are inferior. Because think about this, if you say that someone, that whites can oppress blacks and other minorities unconsciously, you're saying that whites are so powerful that, that in their sleep, they can oppress you. And that when we look at anti-racism measures, it means that they must grant you permission to have any level of success. And they must do it consciously because they're so powerful that unconsciously they can stop you. These are people that are trying to find a reason for their failures. This country has been trying to deal with the racial issue for such a long period of time. And rather than trying to understand with data and history, what's going on and why things are the way they are, they've simply assigned it, assigned different things to race and, and come up with something as a solution that, that is untenable. I mean, it's untenable. If you look at all of this CRT stuff, you look at it and you say, okay, let's implement all of it. Let's have every white person in the country say they want to be anti-racist. Let's, let's just do all of this stuff at one time. The outcome you would have is an engineer who can't build a bridge because they're not, they're not adequately prepared at math or a doctor that can't do surgery. The outcome of all of these things would result in a failure of, in our, of our society based on the idea of the, these people truly believe that blacks and minorities are inferior people, that they cannot achieve. So because they cannot achieve, that all of these things have to be done. This, these are, these are the facts of the matter. The difference in how kids perform academically has more to do with the parents and what the parents have done at home with the child before they start school and after they're in school more than what the teachers do. That is just a fact. Before they start school and after they're in school more than what the teachers do. That is just a fact. If we, we do not have communities that are safe, doing well economically. That have schools like Baltimore. On the other side, we don't have unsafe communities with broken families producing excellent students. So that should tell us that our problem starts in the community. It starts with families. And that as long as we ignore that, we're never going to traverse some of these issues and distances. We can't do it. We can't put programs in place in school unless we address these root issues. And, um, I don't know if you know, there's, there's a study I quoted in, in, in one of the speeches I did, a Hart and Risley study. And it's been followed up through Stanford and a number of other groups that have done the study and it, what it did was it measured. The vocabulary, the amount of words that a child heard before they start at school. And then they tracked the kids after they started school. And it turned out that in wealthier families, kids tended to hear more words. It doesn't even matter if it's of a different language. They tended to have, hear more word to be stimulated more vocally. Before school and that it showed that those kids had better performance as they went through high school. Even Obama released a study on pre K, the success of pre K. And it showed that pre K, the effects of, the positive effects of pre K dissipated by the third grade. Because those programs did put a level of academic rigor and vocabulary building into the process. But because of what happens at home, those effects trailed off. And those children after the third grade performed the same as everyone else. Now you look at places like success academies and a number of different charter school programs around the country. But they said, okay, if, if the root cause of some of these, of this chronic underperformance has to do with exposure to vocabulary and rigor. Rather than having a temporary program like preschool or something that just covers a period of time, let's look at rigor and implement it over the entire 12, 12 months of 13 years of education, K through 12, and see what happens. And those schools have the highest, uh, in, in New York state, the schools that do that, success academy, they have the highest scoring on standardized tests of any group. And, and they're, and, and those are primarily minority students. So I look at what's going on and say, we can solve these problems. We don't need to go to, um, schools and do these measures to lower the standards. We need to look at why, if we look at the Asian community and they're performing better, let's ask the question, why? Let's, let's learn from that situation and try to do what we can to implement those types of best practices in the systems. And that's what's going to lift minorities. That's what's going to lift blacks. That's what's going to lift, lift Hispanics and Latinos. I'll give an example in, in Hispanics. In Baltimore city, right? Blacks graduated at a higher rate than whites. Blacks graduated about 73%, whites at about 72 and some change. Latinos, Hispanics graduated 54%. And they don't do anything about it because, you know, they talk about racial discrimination. They talk about blacks, but when they give you the numbers, they combine Hispanics into it. And they come up with this number that's lower than whites in the system, when in fact it's not true. And we know when we look at the data, right, that what the Hispanic community needs is better. English rigor earlier in school because it limits the comprehension to be able to pick up new skills later on. But rather than spending the money to do that, to help Hispanic students, they scream racism. Well, we already know why it's happening. Right? We know. And there are programs across the country, best practices that have reversed these effects. And built that vocabulary. And it turns out in many, in most of these studies that where academic rigor is increased and vocabulary is increased. That it has an effect where math scores go up as well. Turns out you can't read a word problem if you don't have the vocabulary to understand it.
This is great stuff, Paul. Thank you. Um, my associate producer here, Coleman Bun, just sent me an interesting ta, uh, text via our chat. And he said, uh, sourcing from Parents Defending Education. In a recent text, board member Stella Pekarsky apparently said, and I, I'm not, I, I'd have to go online to see this to corroborate it myself. Braybrand quote screwed up TJ and now the Asians hate us. Board member Abrah Omeish responded that he was quote, just dumb and too white, end quote. Pekarsky texted Omar Amash that the new admissions proposal quote will whiten our schools and kick our, and kick our Asians, I guess. Kick out our Asians, I guess. I'm not sure. Omeish wrote, I mean, there has been an anti Asian feeling underlying some of this hate to say it. So there was, there was quite a few Asians there that are expressing these concerns. Norma, um, you, if I remember correctly, you're from, you're from Peru, correct?
Yes.
And we're, we're talking about having you do a show called Hispania Today, delving into issues around, uh, around America from a Hispanic viewpoint and perspective. I would like to get, before we move on to the next topic, I'd like to get your comments on what Paul mentioned and your, what you saw happen with your own eyes at, at the school board meeting the other night. Norma, how about it?
Absolutely. I'm going to start with the second one. I was in attendance. As a matter of fact, I addressed the school board and I asked them for their resignation. I mean, the ruling of, uh, the 31 page ruling of Judge Hilton is an indictment, definitely of their moral carriage. Their, their moral character, their professional competence, their adherence to the constitution of the United States. But, um, just focusing on the second part, I mean, the judge Hilton said, for instance, if they care so much about promoting diversity. Why they haven't set up a program to provide free, um, preparation for the tests, for the TJ test. Something as simple as that. There isn't something like that. So they prefer to go over this in complicated and unconstitutional program instead of implementing something. By the way, a school, uh, a district, a school district with resources to, to, to put in place something like that, right? So it's something that we can discuss afterwards, um, in our, in our topic, but in going over, addressing the issue of Hispanics, I fully agree with what Paul is saying. Working with the Spanish families require a strong outreach for the families. And, and the buying of the family and providing the resources of the family is, is a different dynamic because we have to strengthen the, the family nucleus there. Providing the resources and the tools. And this is what is something that we are trying to do with Spanish for staying a very small scale. Just imagine that the school takes the initiative and does that and invest in Hispanic families because everything, to be perfectly honest, everything starts there. With a strong support of the family, expanding the vocabulary, for instance, in my person, in our family case, we will invest in books and we'll go into the library. Early on, so he can expand the vocabulary to grasp a mathematical problem. So I am totally in agreement with that. It's something that needs to be addressed and it shows once again, the lack of imagination, the lack of competence and the part of the school board to address issues. The, the main issue, the education, instead of going for this critical race theory, instead of going for all of this racism, et cetera. Why not launching a serious program of literacy with Hispanic families, for instance, or setting up an academy to prepare students for free for the TJ test?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you so much for your insights and for what you're doing locally. Real quick, I want to touch before we get to the CRT thing. And this is, this is again, each one of these topics can be shows on, in and of themselves. I want to touch on another story that I saw in the local news. Actually, I believe it hit national news. Where Fairfax County put out an FRP or an RFP, I should say, uh, request for a proposal. To develop what they are calling a social listening program. And Harry, you being our resident cybersecurity expert, you're going to be a great one to chime in on this. I want to do a full show on this and do a deep dive at one point, but I, I, I hooked up Asra Nemaney. Who, who broke this story through Parents Defending Education. I hooked her up with, uh, the host of another show that I produce. She's a, uh, privacy advocate and a cryptocurrency expert, Naomi Brockwell, at Naomi Brockwell.media. Thriving YouTube channel and I produce a show for her every Thursday and Friday. Asra was on recently talking about this new, uh, proposed social media surveillance system. I'm going to play a quick soundbite for you. And I want you guys to give us your response before we get into the CRT thing. Here we go.
Welcome to the show, Azra.
Oh, great. It's wonderful to be with you and I'm a child of West Virginia. So I really appreciate your theme today of get off my digital front yard. You know, it's a great concept. I love it.
Get off my digital lawn. Well, in this case, it seems that Fairfax does not want to get off the digital lawn of students. It does seem like an incredible overreach that they're going into the private, you know, internet lives of students and to, they're basically like drawing identifiers between people to establish connections. They're looking at photos to wanting to analyze connections between people, create relationships, create this database that comprehensively analyzes this information and stores it in perpetuity of, of children. So walk me through the issues with this and why this is something that you think is in, important to fight against.
Yeah. You know, on, on your metaphor, you know, it's not that they are only on our digital lawn. They have literally like parked their RV there now with their satellite system. And every other device that you could know that engages in this phenomenon, the intelligence community calls open source intelligence. They literally call their data mining now, open source intelligence in this request for proposal that was just put out in November, 2021. And the backdrop is really important for folks because everybody knows, you know, the controversy from post nine 11 of the Patriot Act, right? We know that that was used as a device to, uh, investigate terrorism and there were abuses with it. Well, fast forward to 2021, 20 years later. And the National School Boards Association decided in late September, 2020.
Okay. She's getting into some of the, some of the history there that we, we've talked, that we just discussed here on the show and we've covered on the show. Actually went to the Department of Justice and covered a protest last year about that entire hubbub. Where the DOJ was partnering with the school board association to, uh, to name, uh, parents as potentially as, uh, domestic terrorists. So, you know, that brings up the question and this, this is a great, about a 40 minute interview with Asra. Where Naomi gets deep into it with her and I encourage anybody to check that out, uh, Naomi Brockwell and it's NBTV.media. Your thoughts on this? Now, Harry, I know that you're a little bit more hip to this because that's what you teach and what your field of expertise is, is cybersecurity. You and I were discussing a little bit about what you found out about the social listening program. It's not just Fairfax and it's, it's, it's not just within our region. This is a national thing that's happening and we want to hear from you out there. If you're seeing and hearing rumblings of such programs in your school district. I'm going to turn this over to real quick to Harry, then we'll move on to CRT. Harry?
This should scare you. As you, as you saw in that last clip where you have schools that will use their own private security to intimidate a parent when they're addressing racism. To intimidate parents, this social media listening policy should scare you. Sam mentioned before, like my expertise is in cybersecurity. I'm also retired naval officer. My background being in intelligence, particularly human intelligence. This should scare you. For those of you that live in the Northern Virginia area, the spy capital of the world, those of you that are law enforcement or intelligence force, the devil's ZTLC and this will scare you. That proposal, it's under the, it's under the guise of monitoring social media accounts for children to identify potential threats. That is the stated purpose, but when you look at the RFP, this is where things get really scary. When you look at that proposal, it literally goes through open source or OSINT intelligence, deep web searches. As anything that is threatening to the brand of FCPS. Now, what do they mean by brand? They said that's FCPS in general. It'd be, it's beyond the scope of students. It can include parents, include anything to facilities, to, to parents, to teachers, to whatever initiatives. For example, any political initiatives that you may not agree with, for example, explicit books, books, materials. We have seen out in Loudoun County where they have secret Facebook, uh, Facebook, uh, groups where they identify parents that are might be trouble problematic or, or protest CRT initiatives. And when you think about open source, open source intelligence, uh, with deep web or dark web. That's where 90% of the information that is out there on the web is, is on the dark web. These are the databases that are not openly, that are not easily accessible. This is not simply that you can find on a Google search. There, there is no data retention policy. It does integrate into your student information system. So they're using your child's information as well. And they can collect it for a long period of time. So for us in the intelligence community, you just can't collect on anything you feel like it. You actually have to support your mission. If you're a law enforcement officer, you actually have to have probable cause. They're not doing that. They're developing their own intelligence capability. And how dangerous and how scary this is, is that even in the intelligence community, we have what's called intelligence via compilation or aggregation, where you can aggregate data from open source data. Where it's actually, its impact, if it's disclosed, can become classified where it could have a serious or catastrophic effect on, on something. That's what they're building and it's without any oversight whatsoever, at least if in the intelligence community, when they did their abuses, which we found out that were discovered with the church and pipe committees in the 1970s. They had to answer to Congress. In this case, there is no oversight. So what we're dealing here is that they're developing this capability, not only here in Fairfax, but they also have an, are similar RFP in the same language up in Maryland. You're dealing with an intel, with a school board developing its own intelligence capability without oversight. That is scary. What can that information be used for? Who are they going to share that information with? Because if they, we've already seen the case with Mr. Davidson, has been harassed by his school board members for critiquing them. What if they put their, they have their own analytical product that does not meet any intelligence community directive standards, no analytic tradecraft? They're not having to share with you, with this vendor, what other data sources they're using to challenge that. And first of all, why do they even need it?
Let's, let's, well, they're, 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 I, I think that they are promoting it as a, uh, student safety issue, anti bullying, blah, 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 blah. I mean, so check this out.
They got all those other capabilities.
To your point about, about vendors, there's another comment from Asra. Check this out.
A piece of paper with the contract that Fairfax County signed with Panorama Education. Folks are not going to be able to see this very well, but the image up here in the far corner is our US Attorney General, Merrick Garland. Why is he connected to this story? Well, over here is a lovely cup, picture of a couple. And this couple is his daughter and his son-in-law. And his son-in-law is one of the co-founders of Panorama Education, which is data mining our children's information today. Doing these psychometric surveys, putting them in this early warning system. And this is the man who acted on that request by the school board association to get parents off their backs, right?
You know, I, I find it, I find it astonishing how the, 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 uh, the, in the echo chamber, you hear so many people on the right referred to as, uh, as, or even if you're in the middle, you know, uh, as fascists. This is the definition of fascism. This is merger of corporate and state power, right? And then I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm flabbergasted that we're even having this discussion and that somehow or another that people are okay with this. Being, being implemented through the public school system. Uh, this is where we're at as our country.
They're using kids as collectors.
Yeah, yeah. No doubt about it. Paul, your thoughts on this? I know I've had this discussion with some of the other folks here. I haven't heard your thoughts on this. What are your, what, what do you think about what's happening here, sir?
I think that the underlying, the, the underlying issue is the perception by those in the education industry. That they own your children, right? On a legislative basis, there are laws passed across the country that, that basically, you know, teachers, schools, administrators, they look at a social problem. And they say, well, if I get to your child, I can correct it because you're not correcting it. And there's a difference between, how can I say this? When someone doesn't recognize another person's rights. That opens up a lot. For example, you know, if I believe in freedom and I believe in giving people maximum freedom. And let them make decisions about their own life, even if that decision results in something negative. Then there are things that I won't do and, and, and you can't write all that down. These people that pursue these things, they're locked in their own echo chamber. And they're saying, okay, I want to proactively control people's behavior. I want to find out ahead of time if a child has a tendency to bully or, or if they're doing something outside of school, et cetera, et cetera, that I, that we don't approve of. I think that it is dangerous. It's extremely dangerous, but it's not something, it's something that's difficult to fight. Because it's very difficult to legislate your way out of this. Until we get a regime in, in the legislature and across every state where parental rights are recognized. And that there's a line drawn in the sand that says, the role of the school is defined as delivering. as delivering academics, an academic product and not a social engineering product. Until we can push back and push that boundary to say, parents will fail. And when parents fail, it is not the responsibility of the government through the school system to fix that. And that's just the truth. Right now, the progressives argue that parental failure justifies whatever they do. Parent doesn't teach your child about sex, so we're going to have sex education. A parent doesn't teach your child not to bully, so we're gonna, so we're going to take over and take over bullying. We're, you know, they're taking over law enforcement. We, you know, we need, we have control of the child, therefore the courts don't need to know what we're doing because we have control of this child. We'll engineer that child. We will determine the outcome. So I think this is a bigger societal issue. This is a reflection of a societal issue, be it here or in the state. The, the solution to this is we have to, parents' rights does not have any, does not have a broad base of legal decisions. For example, Virginia has a constitutional right, has in their constitution about parents' rights. And it just says, parents have the right to do these things. But Virginia also has legislature, legislation on the books that violate parental rights. And because we don't have any case law to define what parental rights are, that's our struggle. And we can only get rid of these types of things if parents are bold enough to challenge these things in court and to define in legislation, the parameters of parental rights and start to put limits on the power of the school system. Right now, if you read, if you read, it's very open-ended because it was designed to give teachers flexibility. And so therefore, it's very undefined. It was designed to keep politics out of the, the curriculum, the specific curriculum of education. And so it's very undefined. And so we have to, we have to get that. They mandate equity training, but they don't define equity. They mandate cultural competency, but they don't define it.
We're going to see some, we're going to see some examples of that in our next segment on CRT. And again, I encourage anybody, check out, Paul, how can people get hold of you? They want to learn more about your work?
They can go to www.nsaaba.org. You can go to my paulatforcongress.com. My contact information's there. Email me, talk to me. There's a lot of information, both, there's a, there's a lot of good body of information out there on, on what some of these issues are and how we need to fight them.
No doubt about it. Real, real quick, Brian Davison, Harry brought you up in his assessment as to the social listening and the scraping of social media. As somebody who has been directly targeted in a retaliatory manner by a local school board, does this send chills down your spine to see something like this happening?
From other parents who had the same thing, just to give a little background, what happened on me. When I started speaking up in the beginning of 2015, the first I got a hint of this was when on LinkedIn, it'll tell you who's looking at your profile. And I saw that there was a Loudoun County Public School Security Supervisor who was, you know, kind of investigating. So I issued a FOIA request asking for the documents they had collected on me. And they said that they had hundreds, but that they were exempt and they would not give those to me. Then they even tried to charge me for asking for them, even though they wouldn't give any documents to me. Later on, I learned that they were following me on social media, aggregating just public posts I made to like national education blogs. And they, they use these internally to justify banning me from schools. A school board member even collected a lot of internal emails I had sent to the, to the school board, which was an improper use of them and sent them to my employer to try to have me, have me fired. And, you know, a lot of other parents have done this, but, but this is, are not fringe groups. These are school board members and officials taking internal documents, you know, that they collect on their own time, using public money to target a parent that's criticizing them and try to retaliate. I mean, this is what you see from security services in Russia or autocratic regimes. And, and the fact that, you know, sometimes courts turn, turn a blind eye, or that the public has, has turned a blind eye. You know, we need to make them aware that this is happening to every day. And that the, until we take back our school boards and take back our, our, you know, school districts, that, you know, this could happen to you.
Wow. Well,
We need to make this.
Just a point.
Yes, 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 Harry, go ahead.
Just to point out, this is, this is something that, you know, when you train a new intel analyst about analytic bias, one thing you don't want to ever have happen is what's known as the politicalization of intelligence. And if you have a school board member where they have this capability and you have a parent that's critiquing them, legitimate criticism, exercising their First Amendment rights, that they're using this capability to target that parent. And then it's not just Google. It's open, it's, it's an OSINT capability. They're not, they're not relinquishing the means of what data source they're pulling into. And it does tie into what data that they even need to be collecting, even about your child. We've even heard Mr. Davidson mention before that they'll call Child Protective Services on special education parents when they have, when they've expressed a concern. And there's absolutely no data limitation. So if you have multiple children in a school district, that's collecting years of data, not on just your child, but also on you as the parent. If you're not following in line, that this capability can be weaponized against you. And who knows who that can be reported to? To law enforcement, to your employer? This is, this is some scary stuff.
Real quick, I think this is important in the sense that we need to record this and this needs to be crafted into legislation. Because we can talk about this all we want to. The bottom line is, is that at this point in time, they haven't necessarily done, done anything illegal. So we need to make it illegal. The, the, the Virginia Senate will flip during the next election. I'm pretty sure of that. We need to have legislation crafted, ready and available in order to protect parents as they become more activist. Otherwise, these are going to be one offs going out, going up, taking place all over the place and we'll have no, we'll have no recourse. We need to collect this and we need to take action on it.
Just, this was one quick.
Yes, go ahead.
Sam, as soon as I learned about this, request for proposals, thanks to Parents Defending Education. I mean, without Parents Defending Education, we, I don't have the time to go over the different requests of proposals on the website of FCPS. I submitted to them, I said those six questions. And one of them was whether or not they informed the parents before requesting these proposals, whether or not they are going to go ahead, inform the parents about this idea. And that's exactly what Mr. Loz is saying, Paul, that they are taking decisions, they are embarking upon contractual decisions without consulting the parents. And that is unacceptable because it's going to affect them. And in fact, in the email I sent it to them, I said, look, this is, I've been in contact with you. You can check my Twitter's. I never use Facebook to do that. And I reported everything to them. I say, this is my information and you can dig into it. You are not going to intimidate me. And I, in fact, I use this to protest what you are doing because I think the contract is over $200,000. Can you imagine how many hours of free tutoring we can, we can, we can offer to low income Hispanic and Black students?
So, so did they reply to your, to your request and say, thank you for the attachments and for you, for the, the invitation to check out your social media, but we already have?
They never replied. They never replied.
Norma, thank you so much. Okay, one last topic we are going to delve into. And if you have any final questions for our guests, this has been a marathon show. I'm so excited about this format. Folks, if you want to join us on USA Now and you want us to partner with you to tell the stories that are happening across these great United States, this technology is phenomenal and we can hook you up wherever you are. Shout out to my associate, producer here, Coleman Bun, doing great work behind the scenes and helping us to cover things happening locally. And if you are interested in learning more and getting involved with us, then I encourage you, please to contact me through usanow.tv. So our final segment, we are going to go ahead and jump into, oh, I want to say, remember the chat. If you have final questions for our guests, hit us up. Final segment I want to jump into is, we've talked about it, 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 and we're going to talk about it some more. Critical Race Theory, CRT, recently a member of the FCPS School Board, Omar Amesh, Abrahar Amesh, I should say, held a forum online and she advertised it as a live forum. We were looking for it and I believe Norma had signed, wanted to jump in and give her comments. Unfortunately, the event was not held live. It was posted after the fact, but we did download it and thanks to Norma's help, we have some sound bites for you. And I just, this is again, is another issue that could go hours and hours and hours and hours. I just want to get your guys' thoughts on what was happening here and some of the, some of the comments from the speakers. I'm going to go ahead and queue those up. And this is Ms. Amesh's Facebook page. Here she has CRT, not Marxist, not, well, I don't understand this. It says, not a Marxist, question mark, bigotry toward white people, question mark, Jesus was into CRT, question mark, against post-modernity, question mark. And then there was powerful and inspiring disagreement tonight. So folks, if you want to go and watch the entire presentation, feel free to have at it. I'm going to go ahead and play some sound bites here for you and get the reaction to our, or from our guests. Here is sound bite one.
Because as you all know, we don't really teach CRT in Fairfax County Public Schools, but no doubt, want to unpack and discuss the importance of some of the thinking around where this came from and why it's important. And I also want to make sure it's clear to our community who are kind of confused about why we're having this together, that in fact, things like racism, discrimination, bias affect our students on a daily basis. They are instructional issues. They are priorities for us as education leaders when thinking about cultivating environments of belonging that allow kids to thrive and learn in safe and healthy environments. So we're talking about CRT gives us a framework and a vocabulary, even as policymakers, to be able to think through conversations and actions around equity and inclusion. Because when we have the humility to recognize that we actually may be in that situation, or in another life, we could have been, or one day perhaps, if, if, you know, circumstance, fate, luck, or whatever it might be, is not in our favor, that we actually may be that homeless person or that person in poverty, or whatever, what have you, then we would be more invested in these equity and inclusion initiatives, right? Then we would see ourselves and our kids and, and our potential futures in those experiences and care to, as a community, invest and build those programs and social safety networks and whatnot. So.
So they, they're not teaching CRT, but it is a foundational rock on which to build all of these equity and related programs. Paul Lot, you are quite an expert on this topic. You want to chime in first for us on what Ms. Amesh had to say?
Yep. So you, you don't actually teach CRT. You, you implement CRT at the education level, right? So we look at cultural competency training. That is training teachers, the tenants of CRT, for them to implement it in their classrooms. So what she's saying is correct. The problem, the, the problem is, is that they assume that the basis of, that the basis of the argument is correct. For example, so CRT, and all of this is based upon this notion that there is systemic racism and that systemic racism favors a particular group. And if you've heard me speak, you've heard me say this a thousand times. Factually speaking, that's not true. And, and these are the facts. If you, if you look at, if you look at from 1959, 1959, 1968, 1959, the black poverty rate was 55%. The white poverty rate was 18.8%, okay? Go forward nine years to 1968, the black poverty rate fell to 34.7%, okay? And the white poverty rate fell to 10%. So white poverty rate started out at 18.8%, but it, it fell to 10%. Black poverty rate, much, much higher, but there was about a 20-point drop in the black poverty rate. Now, if you go from 1968 to 2018, the black poverty rate continued to fall much slower. It fell 14.7% of 14%, okay, to right around 20%, somewhere in there. White poverty rate went up a tenth of a percent. So in order for white privilege to exist, the system would have to benefit white people. But if we go by the census data, if you were born black and poor in the United States in 1959, you were three times more likely to escape poverty than a white child born during the same time period. So the very foundation of it is incorrect, which means that there are other issues in education. There are other ways that we have to look at to explain disparities because the data doesn't support disparity. Look at, look at Virginia. 40% of the schools in Virginia, blacks graduate, I'm sorry, 38% of the schools in Virginia, blacks graduate at a higher rate than whites. In 38% of the schools, in 80% of the schools, the gap, the gap's very low. There are eight school districts in Virginia that have a double-digit graduation gap. And in four of them, blacks graduate at a double-digit rate higher than whites. So the very basis of CRT is fictional. There's no data to support it.
Any comments from our panel here? And I'm going to go ahead and play another soundbite for you. Go ahead, Brian.
One of the biggest problems is, you know, Western civilization itself, which is, you know, spread all over the world, is based on the scientific method, you know, logic and rational ability. You know, we've come from, you know, the Dark Ages when they said, you know, whatever the church said is, is the truth. And we're just going to presuppose that, that to be true and we don't have to defend it, right? We don't have to collect data. The whole premise of CRT is they are giving a conclusion as fact so that they don't have to do any analysis or, or collect any evidence. And then they're just going to implement a, a political solution on top of it, right? They say that systemic racism exists and is by definition the cause of any differences between group averages. And that, as Paul mentioned, that only, not only is false, but it teaches our kids to not understand statistics, to not understand the scientific method, to not understand logic. And, and it's part of this driving down standards and reverting to a faith-based political view of the world as opposed to what, you know, TJ and most school systems try to do, which is build up in science and logic and reason and, and hard work and evidence-based, evidence-based data. So it's, it's much more insidious than, than, you know, just the outward effects. It's, it tears down the basis of our schools, the base, basis of Western civilization and everything that we're trying to teach kids. And in my son's class, for example, this is in middle school in Loudon, they had TED Talks and kids would come in and say, you know, cops are gunning down in, in cold blood, you know, victims on the street, right? And this is, I think, the child happened to be Indian. But they're, they're putting out these political narratives and they have no basis for this, right? They're just repeating the, these facts and then they're working backward to achieve a political ends. And it's, it's very scary for all races. It's, it's not, the damage is not limited to any, any one group.
Now, Norma, I, I mean, obviously you can't speak for an entire group, but from the, from Latino standpoint, how does this all settle with you and with folks in your, in your circle?
We, we reject in, in the most stern fashion, critical race theory. I came from Peru. And when I was in college, there was Marxist Leninist and Maoist group, the shining path, that I was terrorizing the, the country. First started in the, in the countryside and then moved to the cities. And in order to impose the rule, and they have this, again, totalitarian ideology that didn't have anything to do with the peasantry of Peru, because they believed that there was this kind of systemic oppression and they used terror in order to implement their, their means and their agenda. They were defeated. They were defeated, not, 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 not by the, by the city. They were defeated by the same peasantry, the same people who decided to organize themselves and fight against them. But in the meantime, they destroyed the economy of the country, they created uncertainty, thousands of people lost. So I come from a country, and many of my friends who come from Latin America, and we embrace this wonderful country, believe, and we have gone through experiments like that, when they are trying to impose a Marxist ideology, totalitarian, without this evidence, without the science. So we reject that. We are not here in the United States to, again, to go through the same thing. So that's why it's, and I have, I can see it, more and more Latinos, Hispanics are rejecting critical race theory because it opposes, it challenges our American dream. Hard work and we are going to make it. We don't want handouts. We believe, and we have gone through that already in many of our countries. So that's, that's the sense that I have from the Hispanic community.
We have another soundbite that you provided for us, Norma. Here we go. Here we go.
So the analogy that I've used, and I, I'm going to put a few links in the chat for Abra to share out to people. So I was invited to write an opinion piece by the Colorado Recorder about critical race theory. And so the analogy I've used is, middle school students in the seventh grade are likely learning about electricity, doing experiments with electricity, but they are not being taught electrical engineering. So that's whenever people are talking about critical race theory infiltrating K through 12 school districts, it's really important to note that it, it's really not happening in the way that those of us who teach critical race theory in the college level understand. Now, here's another question. What would be wrong with, with creating appropriate lesson plans in the way that Dr. Coates has just described that talk about the accurate history of the United States? The fact that this, I am, I am currently coming to you from the traditional territories of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and Ute nations. And I'm not giving this land acknowledgement out of any kind of performative sense. I'm, I'm just factually stating that I understand that I'm on indigenous land. So that's where we begin when we talk about the United States, where we should begin. And then how did the United States grow to be such a rich superpower? A lot of the wealth derived out of the transatlantic slave trade. Again, these are just facts, and you can have feelings about these facts, but these are just facts, and we should be able to talk about these facts. The last thing I want to say is that I get asked about my students a lot about when we're going to end racism. And what I say to them is, even if we could figure out a way to end racism, we would have to then also figure out a way to end patriarchy and toxic masculinity. And we'd have to figure out a way to end anti-LGBTQ+.
Okay, so let me throw this out at you. Where is this going to go from here? Anybody on the panel? Where do you see this going now that this ideology has its pretty good, pretty good foothold? Where are we going as a nation?
Well, it's going to fall apart. Yeah, it's good, it's going to fall apart. But they tucked in a lot there. I mean, you heard the speaker mention, they were in a dress, they want to go after toxic masculinity, which, you know, gender roles or, you know, that's the other thing. You just got to look at the Black Lives Matter page where they talk about where they're going to tuck in the LGBTQIA+ agenda, which is, you know, requiring affirmation. They're, they're really pushing the affirmation part of it, not just acceptance. It, it's going to a lot of different places. And I, I think you got to look at, I, I had an opportunity to listen to this talk, and they didn't even have full agreement on their own board with Dr. Coates, when he'd mentioned before, like, you know, accurate, I think we can all agree, we all agree on the accurate teaching of history. But I think it's really, you got to be careful here, like, what does this group that is pushing CRT, what do they really look like? They don't look like anybody on this panel. They really don't. You know, you go to, you go to your NAACP chapter here in Fairfax, and you'll find out that it's, you know, 95% white and woke. And, and these are the ones, these are the people who are trying to push for, for racial norming, that exclude members of black community from even representing themselves in an NAACP chapter. But I'll, I'll open this up to others. I might, I might chime back in.
Sure. Paul?
My position on this is, is, first of all, let's talk about equity. Equity is an unnatural construct, right? It does not exist in nature. In nature, we don't cut off the leg of the lion so that the deer can get away, right? The natural law of survival of the fittest. And, and the mower fit will grow to the top. That's academically, that's athletically, that's whatever it is. The way you help someone, the way you help a group that's underperforming is look at the root causes of the underperformance and address it. So the way to help the deer is not to cut off the leg of the lion, but to help the deer run faster, right? That's, that's natural. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is I, in my research, I've come to the conclusion that racism is a construct of governments, of governments and the powerful. And, and hear me out on this. There's, there's this term called, there's this disease called Draphtomania, okay? This was in the DSM. This was a disease that was a diagnosis of why a slave wanted to escape slave, slavery. And it was considered to be a mental illness in the 1850s. And when you look at this, this is a government book, it gives the symptoms as a slave being melancholy for no reason, basically being unhappy, and being uncooperative. The medical prescription for this disease was to, quote, this is in a government book, beat the devil out of them. So we look at the, at the measured brutality of what happened during that time period. Turns out that that's what the science of the day was teaching people, that that's what you needed to do. So I, I raised this question. If 3% to 5% of Americans owned slaves, right? Why was it, where do people get their opinions from about, where do they get their opinions from about blacks? I always ask the question, how do you feel about Papua New Guinea marriage rituals? Most people say, I don't know, I don't know anything about it. Bingo. If most people were not exposed to slaves, where did their opinions of blacks come from? It came from the media of their day. It was propagated through the systems to benefit those in a political and a financial position. Because most people weren't involved with it. And so even when we look at what's going on with, with CRT today, look at the numbers. Obama, during his second administration during, for his reelection, he was down about 3% according to the polls. He needed to get about 3% increase in votes. During his first election, he distanced himself from blacks, talked about his white grandmother, et cetera, et cetera. He empowered the fringe in order to get reelection. He opened up that can of worms. In other words, the government opened up the can of worms we, that we're talking about of racism, of, what is it, critical queer theory, et cetera, et cetera. The government opened these things up to shift an election and to solidify a base. Because blacks, particularly black men, were starting to vote more conservative. And in that domain, you have to come up with a narrative to prevent a rock-solid voting community from shifting. And so that's, so when we, when we look at CRT, it's implementation. You do not see this, that this is not a grassroots movement of the black community. When we look at, you know, the issue about voter integrity, when they talk about blacks can't find their way to a poll to get an ID, right? In the days of the civil rights movements, we had television cameras on large groups of black people protesting in the streets for their civil rights and calling out these issues on television and in person and in protests. What lacks this whole CRT, this whole more recent civil rights movement, is there are no cameras recording no oppressed people fighting for their rights because it is all a political construct. There are no, there are no tens of thousands of blacks talking about voter integrity, I mean, talking about, you know, the right to vote. Doesn't exist. Because that is, that, that argument is coming from the government. That's why there's no one being caught on camera talking about these things.
Fabulous. One more quick soundbite and we'll wrap this up. This is pretty interesting.
What I mean, we're not having an honest conversation here is the, the way that Dr. Ray said, there has been this trumpeting of critical race theory as a boogeyman. As like, oh my God, white parents, and it is parent, that it's very clear, white parents, critical race theory is coming for your kids, you better watch out and take control of it. Now, part of the reason why I'm very familiar with this is in Arizona, and in particular in Tucson, Arizona, we had a highly successful Mexican-American studies program where the state of Arizona and the state legislature actually passed a bill to ban said program. And it's, I feel like I'm in that bad Bill Murray, well, actually, it's a pretty good movie, but that Bill Murray movie, Groundhog Day, where it's literally the same thing repeating itself. So what happened then? You had a Mexican-American studies program. Do the people of Arizona know what Mexican-American studies is? No, they just know it's different. So you take that difference, and you say there's something going on in Arizona, and then you create a definition around it. It's hateful, it's anti-Western, it's anti-white, it's anti, it's, it's anti, it's un-American what they're doing, and how dare your tax dollars go to that? And people don't tend to step back in the situation and say, well, you know, because it seems like, why would a politician spend all of this time investing in defining something like this if it wasn't true? Well, that's actually part of, that's exactly it. That what the people, there were two legislators, Tom Horn and John Upenthal, who were both just trumpeting that really, really hardcore. And it actually made them, it got them advanced in the state, to their next political office. It was a winning ticket because you take this thing, you make it scary, and then a lot of the ways that Trump did, you say, hey, here's a problem, and I'm the only one who can solve it.
You know, it's, it's astonishing to me how that argument could easily just be flipped the other way, right? I mean, you could easily look at the methodology, the, the ideology, the, the political motivations and the history of these types of movements and the implementations of the movements and the impact upon various societies throughout human history. You could almost look at that and say that the same thing that that guy just said, that that's what they're doing, are they not? I mean, I, I, boy, the polarity here is just, is mind-numbing to me. It gets exhausting. Harry, I'm glad you have to deal with this more on your show than I need to.
Let me make one comment about that. And I've said this before, for the first 154 years of American history, we did not have public schools. So why did we get them? Between 1920 and 1933 is where we put public schools together. And what preceded that was this, this massive immigration trend that we had. We all know the stories of Ellis Island, et cetera. So we had millions of people coming to the country who settled into distinct communities by country of origin and by language. Now, the problem was, is that these communities were more poor and more violent than integrated communities. So public schools were put together to give Americans a common history and to create a common culture as a segue towards integration of all of these groups of immigrants. People don't realize that Italians weren't considered white back then, neither were the Irish. And that as society integrated, those communities became well.
What about our Sicilians, man? We're separate, we're separated. And we're, I think we're actually, might be closer to Africa anyway, so.
So public education was created to fight globalism and to fight the very idea of CRT of, or even of Mexican education, of, of giving a group a person and teaching them a separate history to keep them separated. The school's responsibility, only responsibility is to teach what we have in common, not to highlight our differences. That's the role of public schools. That's why they were created. And anything else other than that should be unacceptable to any American.
Okay, final thoughts from our panel, and we're going to go ahead and wrap this episode up. Man, what an, this, this has been my sincere honor, guys. I, I really, really want to thank you. God bless you all. You are amazing people, and I'm honored that you are in my life and that you're gracing this new network with your brain power and your soul and your care for humanity. And I'm really looking forward to seeing where this goes from here. So final thoughts, Harry Jackson?
Well, Sam, thank you. Thank you for having me on this, on this panel. As I say, CRT, they literally are going for, after your kids in this case, and trying to indoctrinate your kids rather than educate them. As parents, we need to be aware of the efforts and to, and to become, and to become involved. And this is a very important issue. We talk about education, particularly in Fairfax County, where half of your taxpayer, half of your tax dollars, your property tax, half of that goes towards paying for our schools. We have over $4 billion in our school district. There's a lot of money that's being, that's being used and misused in a variety of ways. We've seen some of the important behaviors, stories that Norma has shared with you, that I've myself experienced in persecution, and Mr. Davison. So thank, thank you again for watching and listening to us.
Yeah, it's absolutely, my, as I said, my honor to have you on and to be working with you to advance this cause. Brian Davison, final thoughts on this topic, or in general, what we covered in the show? Or maybe you want to give a shout out to some people out there and let us know something that's happening? So Brian Davison, final thoughts from you?
Sure thing. I mean, thanks to Luke Rosiak, who's brought a lot of focus to Loudon and all the corruption that's been going on. Because our, our local newspapers were basically in cahoots with the, the school district and wouldn't report on any of it. Would say that each of the Nova School District spends over $20,000 per year, per kid to educate it. It's a big business. And, and I mentioned, school choice is, is really the only way to, to focus on that. You'll notice that virtually none of the school districts are focusing on the actual results because our scores are falling and, and kids are being underserved. And we need to, the, the effectiveness of one's education really has a huge effect on how successful kids are in life. And ultimately, schools do not exist to employ adults. They only exist to effectively educate. And that should always be the focus of, of everything we do.
Excellent. Norma, you want to give us your last thoughts?
Indeed. Thank you so much, Sam. This is such a wonderful idea for you to create this space for parents like us to share your, you share your experiences in dealing with the school, the school authorities, the school boards. So I think this is a grandful space, and I invite all the parents to join you in, in this quest. Because education perhaps is the most important of the issues in, in the, in the United States. Once again, to denounce critical race theory, as a Hispanic, going through my, my history and my country, we know what it, what Marxism looked like and how dangerous it is. And if we want to promote diversity, if we want to lift Hispanic kids, black kids, and diversify the STEM fields, the way to do, the best way to do is not by racial engineering, is by investing, but is by providing the tools and enrichment. And once again, thank you very much. It was a fantastic panel.
Yeah, it was. This was a great, great talk, guys. I want to thank you so much for coming on. And I want to remind people that where this thing came from. Now, listen, basicallyusaNow.tv, not basically, it's, it's me. So it's me and my little space in Fairfax County, Virginia, and utilizing the gifts the good Lord gave me and some cool new technical gear to practice, to use a loose term, citizen journalism, you know? I'm out here on a daily basis, cranking out content and working to give a voice to those that need it and trying to, trying to provide some level of balance against the, the weight of the, of the mainstream and big tech media apparatus that is, that is stifling free speech. So that's really what this is all about. And this all started, and I would encourage you, go check it out, novanow.tv. There was tons of killer content there. As Brian said, when local media wasn't covering this stuff, man, we were out there digging in deep. And I'm really proud of the work that we did and how we, how we implemented these new digital technologies to really raise awareness on a national level for what was happening here. Of course, right now, we're starting out from scratch on our new YouTube channel. You can only see a couple of videos there, including this live feed. So I, I'm asking you, go there, like, share, and subscribe, and all that stuff. Of course, we're on Facebook as well. And yeah, so that's it. Lots of fun. We really, really, really appreciate this. Paul, any final thoughts from you before we wrap it up?
I had a ball. Good meeting you guys. Hopefully, we'll meet in person sometime, maybe have some coffee or a few drinks.
Awesome, awesome. Well, there you have it, folks, the digital party. Thanks so much, guys. Put your hands together for each of you. You're doing amazing work, and I want to thank you. You know, somebody said, what's the first step? You know, asking Norma, what's the first step in getting involved? It's recognizing that there is a, that, that, that your heart is speaking truth to you and that your voice is needed, your voice is valuable, your talents are needed, your talent is valuable, but it's going to take a commitment. These folks right here, man, I've been working for a couple of days building this new show. These folks right here get dedicating a couple of hours on their Sunday to talk about things that they've talked about and talked about and talked about and talked about? Why? Because it's important. So we know you're out there, we know that you have a voice as well, and we on USANow.tv want to hear from you. Harry, looking forward to getting your show going. Paul, Norma, same thing. Brian, God bless you, sir. Appreciate you coming on. All right, and that is it. We are going to go ahead and bring up our out music and say goodbye. Again, I want to thank everybody for joining us for this premiere episode. I'm Sam Atero. This is USANow.tv. And coming to you from beautiful Fairfax County, Virginia, wherever you may be watching, we want to hear from you and we want to get involved with you and help you tell your stories about what is happening in this great country. and help you tell your stories about what is happening in this great country in your neck of the woods. Thanks so much for watching. I'm Atero and I am out. Peace.